All right, everybody. Good evening. I'll call a meeting to order. Meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings on several committees. Please refer to the front page on our website for a listing and application. If we could all stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and endless.
Tonight, we welcome a new member of the Select Board with us tonight, Ms. Daniel Ryan.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, thank you for joining us. Would you like to read our community prayer?
Yes. Can you hear me? Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your Spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office. That is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all citizens of our community that we've been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. All right. The first item on our agenda this evening is the reorganization of the board. Mr. Fantasy, why don't I turn the meeting over to you?
Yes, okay. So, the first item is a reorganization that occurs after an election. The board will make nominations for chair and vice chair. So, the first one is for the chairman, chair of the Select Board. So, are there any nominations for chair?
I'd like to make a nomination for Mark Townsend to be the Select Board Chairperson. I shouldn't say reappoint.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other nominations for chair? Hearing none. I'll take a vote. All in favor of Mark Townsend as chair? Say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay, at this point, I would accept nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Jim Hoffman as vice chair.
Is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Any other nominations?
I'll move Sarah Hewens as vice chair.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. Hearing none. All in favor of Jim Hoffman? Aye. Opposed? Sorry, here is Sarah Hewens.
Aye.
All right, so I believe it's three to two for Mr. Hoffman. All right. Moving on. I believe it was Jim, myself, and John for Jim Hoffman. All right. All straight? We good? All right. Moving on. The next item on our agenda, as always, is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board this evening? All right. Seeing none. We have a poll hearing scheduled for 6:10, but it is not 6:10 yet. We also have a hearing scheduled for 6:20, but it's also not 6:20. And I believe we have some people joining us online for our 6:30 discussion, so we're not going to be able to go to that either. So, we'll skip to our 7 o'clock discussion and possible vote to approve payment in lieu of taxes agreements for the following. Actually, Mr. Roach is going to join us for that. Mr. Fantasy as well, right? Is he here?
He was here earlier.
Elaine, expecting it this soon.
Yeah, Elaine, it's okay. We can move on to Limbius Path. We'll be able to get to 6:10. So, let's move to the acceptance of the deed for Limbius Path Conservation Land to be under the care, custody, and management of the Conservation Commission Registry of Deeds Book 50204, Page 212. And I believe you all have a copy of the plan right here. Mr. Fantasy, is there public access for Limbius Path?
So, I'm not sure on what the access is for the public. I would imagine it is where it's a Conservation Commission approval to take the land, but that's something we can find out after.
Okay. I think I also don't see any spot for parking.
This isn't a development, so I don't know if it's something that... It's more to conserve the land than for active use. It's not really an active use location.
Well, what is the board's pleasure? Would we like to hear somebody come in to give us more information on this, or do we want to vote to accept it?
I'd like to wait and get more information on it.
We can put it on the next agenda.
Why don't we put it on the next agenda? All right, thank you. All right. It is still not 6:10, so we will move on to the appointment of a Select Board representative for the Old Colony Regional Vocational Technical High School District Committee Appointing Authority. And let's see, our current... Ms. Bogart was our representative, correct? So, we're replacing her?
Yeah, we're replacing her.
So, Ms. Hewens, it's yourself and Mr. Carter now, right? My wife is a member of the Old Colony Regional School Committee, so I would like to not do this as possible. So, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Hoffman, would either one of you be interested?
Sure.
I'll let Mr. Ryan.
Is there a nomination for Dan Ryan?
I nominate Dan Ryan for the Select Board Appointing Delegate for the Old Colony.
Second.
All right, nomination and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you.
All right. And let's see, moving on.
We couldn't pilot two.
To the 7:25 item, the appointment of a Select Board representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board. I'm the current representative to the advisory board. I'm willing to continue if the board would like me to continue. And if you would, then feel free, someone would feel free to make a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Nomination and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Our 7:30 agenda item, Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development, SERPED Commission Appointments, Select Board Representatives. Thomas Bott is the planning... Thomas Bott would be the Select Board Representative, correct? And Thomas...
Correct.
Sorry, I lost my place here. Cornelia Shea is the Planning Board Representative?
Correct.
So, is Tom Bott the current Select Board Representative? And is he interested in being reappointed?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Is there a nomination for Mr. Bott?
I nominate Mr. Bott.
Second.
All right, nomination and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. And finally, our 7:35 agenda.
Cornelia Shea.
Cornelia Shea, do you have to appoint?
Oh, okay. So, we vote for that? The Planning Board doesn't... We vote for the Planning Board Representative? All right, is there a nomination for Cornelia Shea for the Planning Board?
I'll nominate Cornelia Shea to the Southeastern Regional Economic Development District.
All right, we have a nomination and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. And I now have 6:10, so we can move back to our 6:10 item, EverSource Poll Hearing. We have a request to install one poll, number 20/54-S, an anchor guide on the public way on or around 18R and 19 Rochester Road. Welcome. I'll open the public hearing on this item. You could just introduce yourself.
I'm Fay Swetman from EverSource.
All right, great. Thank you. Tell us a little bit of what's going on here.
So, the pole is needed across the street to pull the wire back for safety.
If you could just make sure you speak into the microphone.
I apologize.
So, I'm sorry. Did you say it was being moved back?
The pole is being... The stub pole and the anchor guide are being placed to pull the pole across the street because it's leaning, so it's for safety.
Okay. All right. Are there any members of the public here tonight that would like to speak on this? All right. Are there questions from the board?
Have all the butters been notified?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Fantasy?
Yeah, so I went down there today to take a look at it, and it's across the street from houses, but the pole is starting to lean, so they're looking to secure it so that it won't obviously fall over. So, it's rather benign for an issue.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just one quick question. So, the pole's not installed yet, right?
No.
To put that, okay.
We're trying our best to stop that, sir.
Just checking.
You brought two little sticks installed.
That's fine.
So, just to follow up on that, is the process now we have a poll hearing that some from the town will go out and verify the location and things like that because of the issues we have in the past?
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
You know, to do that, yeah. So, that's kind of what I'm doing.
And I think in the past, I think a few of us on different occasions have gone out to just sort of view the location depending on what's going on. So, anyway, any other questions from the board? All right, is there a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. We'll close the hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Fay.
All right. All right, so obviously, we are still not at 6:20, so we will move to our 7:35 agenda item, the Southeastern Regional Planning and Economic Development District, SERPED Commission Appointments, Select Board Representative Appointment, John Woods, and Joint Transportation Planning Group Representative and Alternative Appointment, Chris Vincent. Any discussion on this, Mr. Fantasy?
No, they requested to be on it, to remain on it.
They're both willing to serve. All right. Is there a motion to approve?
I move that we appoint John Woods as the Select Board Representative.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to approve Chris Vincent?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Moving right along this evening, Mr. Fantasy. I guess we're at the Town Administrator Update.
Okay.
We could do... Mr. Roach is here.
Right. Is he?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't see him. All right. Mr. Roach, thank you for joining us this evening. So, we'll jump to our 7 o'clock item. We are all over the place this evening. Discussion and possible vote to approve payment in lieu of taxes agreements for the following, Captona Ravenbrook LLC, 246 Plymouth Street, Assessors Map 48, Lot 1, and Zero Rear Plymouth Street, Assessors Map 48, Lot 4, and GLC Mass, Akushnet Purchase Street LLC, 12R, Great Meadow Drive, Assessors Map 55, Lot 1, BR. All right. Mr. Roach?
So, you guys should be pretty familiar with these ones by now. So, nothing's changed in the pilot documents that you've seen over the past couple of months. I mean, maybe a typographical period here, comma, something like that. These are the same pilots that were available to the public prior to town meeting at the town clerk's office and on the website. And these are two of the ones that have been renegotiated and were pre-existing pilots. So, this is just establishing, you know, a new payment schedule and asking for the Select Board to vote and sign the pilot agreements. The pilot agreements were signed by the Board of Assessors at the April 25th meeting, and then, following your signature, Mr. Fantasy would also sign the agreements. All right, thank you.
Questions from the board?
Maybe I asked this already, but I've forgotten. On the two payment schedules that you've got, one starts out at increasing at two and a half percent after the first year, the other starts after the 15th year? Can you refresh my memory? Why are they not consistent?
These aren't consistent because they follow the original payment schedule. So, just looking at GL... Looking at Ravenbrook, so Ravenbrook originally ran from fiscal year 2012 through fiscal year 2037. So, when the town originally entered this agreement, they agreed with Ravenbrook to a... I think it was a 24-year agreement, something like that. So, following fiscal '37, beginning in fiscal '38, the pilots begin to increase at the two and a half percent. During the life of the original pilot, which is still in the new pilot, it follows the original pilot schedule minus the amount that was deducted for real estate. So, the main point was, in renegotiating these pilots, was to address the issue that the real estate tax was included when it shouldn't have been since fiscal '19. So, it's the original schedule minus the average real estate bill for the last four fiscal years equals the new payment amount.
And this shows, on the revenue schedule for the town, this shows in these pilot programs will show up in the miscellaneous revenue?
Correct. Both of these are now Page 3 of the recap, local receipts.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, I think since we have so many new people in the audience, that we should explain what a pilot program is.
Exactly. Excellent idea. Would you be willing to do that, Mr. Roach?
Sure. So, a pilot is a... Pilot's an acronym. It's a payment in lieu of tax agreement. So, a pilot takes the amount that would otherwise be raised through taxation and sort of annualizes it out over the life of an agreement. So, personal property typically starts high, and then it depreciates down over the course of its useful life, which isn't really good for a town revenue point of view. You don't want to have something and be collecting less money on it every year. So, the benefit of the pilot for both the town and the developer is that it provides an increasing revenue for the town, and it provides a predictable expense for the developer, which aids them in getting financing, which they need for constructing the projects. Originally, pilots were entered into as solar agreements because there was a question of whether they be tax exempt. That issue's sort of no longer a factor. I mean, they're taxable. But that's sort of originally why, probably back in 2012 and '14, these were entered into because there was a question of whether they could be exempt and what the state would do about making them exempt. Thank you.
Of course. All right. Any other questions?
And through the chair, there are 18 pilot programs in effect for Carver?
Well, there's 18. So, there were 18 prior to town meeting. There were... We have a list. There's 18. One of them's a power purchase agreement that comes from the town of Dartmouth. There's a project over there. And then you have Solar Carver 1 and Solar Carver 3, which are approved pilots. They've gone through town meeting, but they haven't started because the projects haven't been built. Syncarfa, which is at 104 Tremont Street, it's the newest one, so that would be Pilot 19, or Pilot 18 if you back out the one in Dartmouth.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the board? All right, is there a motion to approve these pilot agreements?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Roach. Appreciate it.
Thank you for moving me.
All right, it's now 6:20, so we can move to our hearing for underground 10,080-gallon propane storage application at 20 Shoestring Road, Jellystone Campground. Is there anyone here tonight to speak on this? Come on up.
Just a quick correction. Looking at the documentation, it's 3,980 is the underground storage tank.
Well, I think what we're... I spoke to Deputy Chief, Deputy Assistant Chief Boyle today, and what we're actually voting on, if you look at the accompanying documents, there's a number of tanks, and they total 10,000. That's what it is. So, when they get over a certain amount in total, we vote on that. So, it's not one tank. It's a...
No, I know that.
Yeah.
But, okay, it's just...
So, what we're voting to approve is all of that, the total.
All right. Yes, so I'm with the propane company.
Okay, if you could just name an address for the folks at home?
Yep, Sean McGinn Lee, Austin and Propane, 42 First Ave, Bridgewater, Mass.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. We're going... We've been asked by Jellystone to supply them with propane tanks for the pool, which they're putting in, and then also 150, 120 cabins for 50-gallon tanks that are going to be assessed to the all the cabins that they're putting there. That's basically it.
I do see in our packet that the fire department has approved this.
Yes.
Other questions on the board?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
I see in the application that there's 85 above-ground 60-gallon tanks.
Yeah, so...
So, there's 60 gallons.
Yeah.
And there's 83 cabins, if I understand. So, these are being supplied. There's none in existence today.
Correct.
I understand. So, you're supplying 85 60-gallon tanks for the, you know, for each of the cabins, and then there's one above-ground 1,000-gallon tank that's going to be used for filling?
Yes.
So, will that be used to fill the 60-gallon ones?
No.
No? Okay.
So, the 60-gallon ones will be filled by us.
I see.
Yeah, we'll have a propane truck.
So, the above-ground 1,000-gallon, they say, uses a filling station?
Yeah, so that's used for campers that come in, needs fill up their propane tanks, barbecue tanks, or anything to that extent.
Okay. And through the chair, I have two more questions if possible. So, then there's two underground tanks of 1990 gallons. So, are you saying that one of those will be used to heat a pool?
Those two are going to be used to...
Both of them will be used for the pool?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you know if there's any existing tanks already on site today? Do they have anything that's there already?
They do have a 1,000-gallon pump dispenser to fill the tanks, and then they also have 120-gallon tank there. So, currently, there is 1,120 gallons on site.
Okay.
So, that 1,000-gallon tank that we put on there for the propane dispenser, we're just replacing that one there.
So, of the 1,120 gallons, you're saying you're already replacing 1,000-gallon?
We're going to, yeah.
Okay. And my other question is, as far as inspections go, are there... Will there be, or are there inspections of the filling stations that are required?
I don't... Mr. Fantasy, do you have that?
I don't think there's a formal inspectional schedule, but I think if there's an issue, they'll go out there and check. But just like your propane tanks and, you know, there's no inspections. Not that big, right?
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. 6:25. Mr. Chief Doofly, would you be prepared at this point to...
I'm sorry to interrupt, but did you ask if there was anyone in the audience?
I believe I did. I'll ask again. Was there anyone in the audience that wanted to speak on the storage tanks? No. Chief, would you be prepared at this point to go forward, you think, or...
I am. I think we're ready to start.
Okay. Okay, well, why don't we... Mr. Fantasy, why don't you give us your Town Administrator update, and that'll get us a little closer to 6:30.
So, as you know, and you can see, the town hall siding replacement has been progressing nicely. Within the next two weeks, the siding should be completed. The Coppola is being renovated and should be installed within the coming weeks around the same time as the conclusion of the siding. If they can get the crane lined up, as well as weather conditions, if we can fix those, we can get that moving faster. So, later this summer, the roof will be replaced on the town hall, as well as over at the library. The HVAC continues to move on, and that should be completed in about two months. So, they're on schedule. They're hoping to get it turned on by July 1, so that they'll have air conditioning, you know, through the system. So, and then, obviously, the next step would be to paint the town, the library also. So, those things are moving forward. On the North Calver Water District, a letter went out to the customers notifying that is anticipated that on June 1st at 12:01 a.m., the switch over to North Calver Water will be made. That takes us away from the Middle Borough Water, which they've been getting since, I think, was it July, somewhere around that time. The notification also informed the customers that the water source will have all applicable testing done and approved by the master EP prior to the switch-over date, and they'll ensure that the water will meet all requirements and standards. And I want to thank the North Calver Water District Commissioners for their continued diligence in processing the maintenance and the replacement of parts and getting us to the point where we're almost ready to go back to normal, if I can say that. So, additionally, over the past two weeks, the town employees attended a mandatory sexual harassment training program, which was set up by Elaine Weston, who's our Assistant Town Administrator and also HR Coordinator. This important training would not only help to educate our staff, but also could ultimately limit our liability and our insurance costs. So, I want to thank Elaine for setting that up and getting a great attendance and coming to take the class. We had a resignation of a full-time dispatcher, unfortunately. Very difficult to find dispatches these days. The position will be posted, and we have per diem dispatches that will pick up the slack and fill those slots until we do get a new employee. I also want to mention that the Emergency Management Department has completed an update and revision of the Town of Carver's Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan in accordance with the current Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency guidelines. This was a large project, which required considerable effort and represents a significant accomplishment in keeping the town's required response plan up to date. Earlier, the Hazard Mitigation Plan was completed last year, and the Hazard Materials Response Plan was completed in 2021. I want to thank our Emergency Management Chief, Tom Walsh, and his team for keeping our town in the forefront of complying with these regulations and with the programs and requirements that we have to meet. So, good job on that. It was a lot of work. And lastly, it was a sad time for a few of our fellow employees. Condolences go out to our town accountant, Kathy Kay, and our police recruit, Christopher Mahoney, who's in the police academy, who both lost their mothers the past week. So, condolences to them.
Absolutely. Mr. Fantasy, just a quick question on the North Calver Water District. So, do we have someone either in town hall or with small water systems, or hopefully both, set up for a couple of days before and maybe a day after in case there's any problems up there?
Yeah, so first, on that letter, we're now with notification of who to call for emergencies 24 hours a day. Also, John Ball in Dave's office is getting caught up to speed, and he'll be working on our end, even though it's not North Calver Water District, working with them to give guidance as needed. Because obviously, you know, the people are going to see a drop in pressure. to see a drop in pressure compared to what we're getting from Middle Borough. There might be some cloudy water for the first day or two while the system goes through the process. But there'll be a notice on how best to handle that from the North Calva Water District, running your water and so forth. So...
Okay. Good. I just, I think it's important that they have somebody to call if there's an issue. So, good. Any questions from the board?
So the things that you just mentioned, was that already told to the people?
Yes. That went out with their last bill.
So they told them that the pressure might be lower?
Yeah. And to expect cloudy water and so forth. But they'll keep communication going with these people.
As long as they know ahead of time.
Yep. They don't want to go through what we went through in the past.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fantasy.
Thank you.
I had a quick question. Not that I want to jinx going live with the North Calva Water System, but if something was to happen and the board had to get involved, like last time, can we just, like, something happened, go up there on a Friday, can we just have a meeting that Friday without any public notice from standpoint of, you know, emergency meeting, acting upon it? Do we open ourselves up to a meeting violation? Can we claim some kind of life safety?
That's a lot of hypotheticals. Technically, it's the North Calva Water District Commissioners who would have to have the meeting, but, you know, I would obviously get in touch with them. You can have an emergency meeting if there's an emergency, and you still have to post it and so forth, but you do due diligence in getting the word out that there's an emergency meeting. So knock on wood, I hate to even say it, but if something should happen like that, the good thing is that we still have the connection for Middle Borough if we need it to. I'm sure they could switch back over in short time. But that's, you know, again, the goal is to be brought online in Calva for the Calva residents.
I mean, along those lines, it sounds like it might be prudent to schedule a meeting, you know, on the day they're going to cut over, just so they have it posted in case they can always cancel, I suppose, if...
It's a good idea. I wonder, what does June 1 fall on?
June 1, I have it in front of me. June 1 is a Thursday.
Thursday, okay. I'll pass it along to them, yeah.
To make a meeting, just to make sure they're, you know, at least they're posted to make sure it goes smoothly.
Yep.
I have a second question, too. On the library siding, is there any issues with, is it just going to be painted, or are there any siding issues that need to be?
No siding. It's all paint.
It's all paint.
It's scraping and painting.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from anybody? All right. So now, we will move back to our 6:30 agenda item, King Richard's Fair Traffic Plan Update from Chief of Police, Mark Dufly, and representatives from King Richard's Fair.
Sounds like she's waiting to be...
Yes. All right. Here we are. Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I sure can. Thank you.
All right. Fantastic. Thank you for joining us this evening. Chief, as always, thank you. This has been a tough issue, but I think we've worked through it. Now, do you have, do you have an update?
Sure.
Actually, could you just spend a couple of minutes, just for the sake of our new member, just reviewing a little bit what's going on and what's led us to this?
Certainly. Good evening, and thank you for the time to talk to you tonight. First, let me say congratulations to Mr. Hoffman on reelection, Mr. Ryan on election, and Mr. Townsend on remaining chair.
Thank you.
And thank you for having us here tonight. So, a little bit of reflection. Over the past few years, we've experienced some issues with traffic from the fair. I'm sure you're aware of it. I think everybody is. And with the support of the board and working alongside with the owners of the fair, we've been working on solutions to that. Last year, we tried a solution that included a new traffic plan out in the road, which greatly assisted in, but was still at times overwhelmed. The board charged both the Public Safety Chiefs and John Woods and Mr. Fantasy, and the owners of the fair to work together to come up with a better plan for this year. And I think that tonight, you'll hear that we have accomplished that and that we are prepared to move forward in the fall with a better plan. And I'll caveat that with, a plan is a plan. And we may be able to adjust it as it goes along, because we can't put it in place and test it until all the people come to the fair. But I do want to say that, to thank the people who have been part of it, first of all, Chief Weston, Chief Ryan, Chief Walsh, John Woods, Mr. Fantasy, Ame Sedley, and the owners of the fair. Everybody's worked together very well to make this a priority and to make this happen. I think the fair, being a business in town, recognizes its need to work with us on this and to come up with a solution that allows them to be in business and the residents to get to their homes when they want to. So we spent quite a bit of time. The fair's been very good to work with, as far as I'm concerned, and we have now what I believe to be a pretty good plan in place that will accommodate their day-to-day customers that come in and also deal with anything that overflows from that. Ms. Sedley's on the line, so she can speak to it, too. But I want to say that we've talked about, we started, one of the ideas that was brought up was about dated a number of tickets for each day, and they've done that, have accomplished that. And I feel that it's, from what I've been told about their plan, I think it's the best plan we have in place, and I think that it will work. I think they recognize the need to limit the number of patrons, both so we can keep the traffic to a minimum and keep everybody there safe, but also to better have their business function better. So I think that's the first stop. We're going to also use the traffic plan that we used last year, which was very successful. We're lucky to have John Woods and the members of the DPW. They can put that together every day, and they've done a good job at doing that. That, as you recall, divides Route 58 up into three lanes and allows us to have a center lane for the northbound traffic coming into the fair and the far right lane for the southbound traffic going into the fair, which allows us to, for the most part, to keep traffic that's passing by the fair continuously flowing. And I think that plan worked very, very well until it, at a couple of endpoints, we got overwhelmed. But I believe we addressed those, overwhelming that traffic pattern by doing the dated limited tickets per day and by also having a plan in place with good signage that we can easily maneuver into to have an alternate parking, two alternate parking spots to put cars at if we get to the point where the parking lots are full. This has taken quite a bit of time. As I mentioned, I'm grateful everybody participated because people took a lot of time out of their lives. And I have to say that I think the fair has responded very, very responsibly and correctly in this. They've listened to what I've told them through from the Select Board, and I think they've taken appropriate actions to move it forward. Again, that remains to be seen once we start in the fall, but I do believe we have a very good plan in place. I think it will work. In addition to that, as Mr. Fantasy just mentioned about Mr. Walsh doing the Emergency Action Plan, we have developed with the fair, or updated and improved on their Emergency Action Plan to deal with any type of emergencies that might come up at the fair. That's not something that we publish or release to the public, but I want to know that we've spent a lot of time on that, too, to make sure that if something does go wrong, we have a better plan in place to be able to deal with it. So I got to commend the fair on both of those things, because it took a lot of work, but it's what we should be doing in 2023 to make sure that our residents and the patients of the fair are safe and that they can travel on the roadways without being hampered too much. Again, the fair does bring in traffic. There's still going to be traffic. So we would plan on seeing cars out there, but I think we've got a plan in place that'll be very effective moving forward.
Great. Can I just touch on one thing that you mentioned? Because I think there was a little bit of back and forth on it last time. So I know that we have the dated tickets, but there is now an agreement on the number of tickets that will be sold for each day of the fair as well. Is that true?
So I'll leave that to Ame, if you don't mind, if that's okay with you?
No, no, no. We had said before in the last meeting that we have taken what that one weekend crazy, crazy, crazy traffic weekend was during Labor Day, homestay weekend, when everyone wanted to join us because it was so beautiful out. And we've been raining out the weekend before, so that made it even more of a popular weekend for people to attend. And we have decreased that number by thousands of people so that we have an even flow of attendees. We've also, as we had mentioned in the last meeting, to change ticket pricing tiers so that September is a less expensive ticket, because everyone usually likes to come in October when it's nice and cool out. And so we're hoping that that, as well as moving through events and so forth, since September, just really gives us a nice even flow of traffic and attendees and just hopefully weather. Weather's the one thing we can control. But yes, we have limited the amount of people that can come in each day so that it is more manageable for everybody involved.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Chief?
I did forget that we also talked to John Woods about putting up snow parking signs, just in case. I don't think we're going to have that same issue that we had last year, but I think we'll, to be proactive, we'll put those signs up. I don't think the public wants permanent signs up there. It doesn't really make 58 look that great to have a bunch of signs there, but I think for the few weeks of the fair, we probably should get them up and have them in place, and then take them down when the fair's done.
Okay.
But again, I don't think we're going to have that problem, because I think we, you know, I think we're working well together.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. We are. And thank you to everybody. It's been a long process, but I think we've really come to a good place all around.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else for us? I think before I, just before I turn it over to the board, I just want to thank everyone involved for working so hard on this, because this was a real struggle, I think, for the residents in that area, as well as just people in town. And I think a number of us have said on a number of occasions that the best way to solve these problems is to have everyone come together and work toward a common goal. And it sounds like everybody did that on the town side and on the fair side. So I really appreciate that.
Well, I have to thank the residents as well, giving us this opportunity and their trust to put together a plan and try to make it better as well.
I think so. Mr. Carter?
And maybe I missed it, but did you talk a little bit about, do we still have a busing component yet for this?
Yes. With the alternative parking lots, the fair's already worked with the school committee, with Mr. Neef, to arrange for buses to be on standby if needed. We used those last year, and they worked out very well. There's a side benefit of that, is it keeps the bus drivers working. And Mr. Neef finds that, I don't want to speak for him, but as you told me, he finds that to be a great benefit to this. In addition to the fair paying for the attentive courses of the buses and paying for the drivers, it gives them a little extra work on the weekends, which is a benefit to the employees.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
All right. Questions from the board?
So those off-site satellite parkings, is that the high school?
One is the high school, one is at Calva Square. And it doesn't use the entire piece of the high school, so there's a, it's the side towards where the big auditorium is, where we park in that area there, but the rest of it is left open for the residents.
Okay. Anyone else? So I guess just to follow up on the off-site parking. True. And this may not be worked out yet, I don't know, but one of the things I heard last year, when we had off-site parking at Ediville, was that people parked, but the buses were so infrequent that instead of waiting for the transportation to get them to the fair, they just decided to walk on their own, which created more problems. So do you feel comfortable with what we've worked out for transportation-wise, or has that not been worked out yet?
You know, that is, I do feel comfortable that we worked it out correctly. If you remember back to then, that we did, we had to, part of the problem was we had to get these buses last minute, and we weren't able to get as many buses as we probably would have liked to have. I think the fair recognizes that, as we do, as a problem. If they can't get their customers there, then they're not getting to the fair. So I'm very confident that Ms. Sedley has worked with Mr. Neef to ensure that we will have the proper number of buses so that we can keep a loop going and keep people moving. I think the differences in these parking lots compared to using Ediville is twofold. One is they're marked spaces so that we don't need to have people parking cars. People know how to park their cars in a line. And with the proper signage, you can get the people to go in the area to get on the bus. And that signs will include reminding them not to try to walk, but also it is incumbent upon the fair to have enough buses ready to do, to make that happen. We tried doing it last year with three buses from that one lot, or two buses, and then we got an extra one, and it just wasn't enough. So I am confident that they're aware of that, and we're moving forward on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Would you add anything else? Ame?
Oh, me? I didn't know. Everyone's looking this way. Sorry.
It's your turn when we look that way, Ame.
Sorry. No, no. Chief Dufly basically said, you know, everything that I would have said. The one thing I will say in regards to that one day where the craziness happened and people were walking down the street, we, one, never could have imagined the crowd that had attended that one day where we parked at Ediville. And we had thought we'd had enough buses. And again, like Chief said, we had gotten them at the last minute. So it was something that was a learning curve for us and for them. And now with the reduced number of people per day, I don't think we will need that. I don't even know whether we'll end up needing the high school, to be honest with you. But at least we have it as a backup, and this is something that we'll know so that we can arrange buses in advance.
Great. Do we know what the date is for the opening day of the fair this year?
Yes. It's September 2. It's Labor Day weekend, September 2.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Now, isn't that Calva Day, too?
That is Calva Day.
Mr. Fantasy, do you have anything to add?
I know. Just, I think it's been a good process to go through, because last year was a real concern, and I think we've gotten there. So hopefully, things will work out well. Thank you, Ame.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Fantasy.
We do know that Ame and I will both likely be there every day, so if there's a problem, we'll make it work.
Yes. Well, I will definitely be there. I'm sorry, Chief, if you have to...
Don't be. That's all right. No worries.
Well, I appreciate it. I know we've asked you to come back before the board a number of times, and we appreciate your cooperation here. It was something, obviously, very important to a number of residents that I think it was incumbent upon the board to address. So I appreciate everyone's help in helping us to find these solutions. One last time, anything else from the board?
Great job by everybody.
All right. Well, good. Thank you, Mr. Dufly.
Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.
All right. Moving right along. Minutes licenses topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. We have the minutes of April 18.
Mr. Chair, I have a couple of things that need to be changed.
Right.
Under, oh, at the first page, under the Community Electricity Aggregation Agreement Program, the third sentence, where it says the rates change every six months. I just want to change that to read if, it's under ever source, if you don't join this aggregation program. So I'd like it to reflect that if the town does not participate in the Community Electricity Aggregation Program, the rates do change every six months. But the CEA does not guarantee the lowest rates, however, it does reduce the risk of volatility, so on and so on, because it locks in the rate for potentially three years. That was the key there. The fourth sentence, under the current agreement, the cost of aggregation is less. I just want that to say aggregation charge under the current agreement is around 10 cents per kilowatt hour, whereas ever sources is 25 cents per kilowatt hour. And then down a little ways in the fourth paragraph, where it starts, Huen stated, the sentence that reads, "When the town first started, the aggregation cost," it should read, "was about 10 cents per kilowatt hour, and ever source was about 11 cents per kilowatt hour", which wasn't that big a difference, but we thought, we thought it was at the time. It's even better now.
All right. Is that it?
Yep.
All right. All right. Anything else from anybody? Is there a motion to approve with that amendment?
Make a motion to approve as amended.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And Mr. Ryan, you're abstaining, obviously.
I think you can actually vote if you've read the, I don't, I recall.
Okay. Well, would you like to vote?
I might have to check with Mr. Fantasy if you can actually vote or not vote on it.
You can.
You can, right?
You're just voting to approve the minutes.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. We have a request for approval of the Harvest Triathlon Road Race on June 11, 2023, from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Is there a motion on that?
So moved. I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. And let's see, we have a request for a one-day special license, the Jack Quindley Scholarship Cornhole Tournament on June 10 from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Calva Sportsman's Club.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Select Board announcements. Mr. Ryan, why don't we start with you this evening?
Okay. I'd like to thank all those who took the time to come out to vote on Saturday. I'd also like to thank the Calva residents that gave me their vote. And I'd like to take the time to thank Jen Bogart for dedicating her valuable time on the board. And I look forward to working with the Select Board.
Going forward. Thank you. Mr. Carter?
We just approved this, but I'd also like to make sure everyone's aware of the Jack Quindley Scholarship Cornhole Tournament on June 10. I highly recommend you sign up. It should be a fun day.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Ewens?
Yes. I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Ryan and Mr. Hoffman for their reelection and election.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Hoffman? All right. Mr. Hoffman?
Just want to echo Dan's, the thanks of everyone that came out to vote. So vote turnout, but we appreciated one that did come up, and that's it.
All right. Thank you. And finally, this evening, Ms. Houns, I just want to thank you for all your hard work as vice chair.
Thank you.
The last couple of years. And we all certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next meeting will be May 16. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.